All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, that brings us down to proclamations. Amended State of Civil Emergency Proclamation. You all should have had an opportunity to look at that. It is nice that we are coming out of this. Danielle, is this yours or is this Brent? That would be Brent.
If I could hit mute, I would be in a much better place. Yes. The proclamation is before you guys tonight. As you see, a lot of the information when you get down into the body of the agreement, you know, effective June, we can add a date there to do a announced opening of town facilities. Water and sewer payments, I believe this has pretty much been updated to our current status. That was one of the concerns is we needed to update this to our current status to reflect our operations currently, and I think this does that. This process has been very fluid throughout. But I think, as you said, I think we are coming to a better place as a town, county, et cetera, state. So we're in a position now to be able to open our town facilities. And one of the things that we did try to avoid was sort of the opening, closing, opening, closing, sort of the yo-yo effect with the uncertainty. But yeah, as right now, the numbers that I saw as recent as today look very, very promising.
I really appreciate you doing that because you know I am one that wanted to open probably sooner than we should have. And you're right, you saw other municipalities, some of my other buddies out there had to close again. So way to hold your feet to the fire on that one and take us through this pandemic. You guys, the town staff did an amazing job. I think we are ready to open and I know that we've had a soft opening, but we've got so many events that are coming forward. And I would like to open and announce it sooner than later. And I don't know, with your recommendation, Brent, I would, I mean, we could go as early as, shoot, we could do it tomorrow, but I would think maybe make it clean and do it next Monday. Barring that we don't have any events that are, that need us to officially open this weekend. When is the train station supposed to be opening?
I do not have that information. Danielle works more closely with this historic preservation group, so she may know.
They were planning on opening Memorial Day weekend. However, they had some setbacks. Some of their displays weren't ready. And it wasn't advertised. Honestly, I'm not sure if they put the sign out saying they were open, but it was not advertised at all. Again, you know, not trying to have a rush of people, trying to ease into it, but they would like to open on the weekends when we do have town events.
Okay. Brent, what is your recommendation that staff would feel comfortable with? I know that they have to prepare just some announcements going out there. What would be a reasonable amount of time to publicize it that we're being out there? And I know it's just by social media or in our news letter or whatnot. Do you have a target date?
As far as a recommendation, I will also sort of maybe pull Michelle Minor in. She has a lot of, has a lot to do with this. I was thinking the 21st, which would be two Mondays to do the announced opening of all facilities, which would give us 13 days. So that would be my initial thought would be the 21st, which also not that it matters lines with payroll and everything else and other, other things that we have considered. But if Michelle has anything she would like to offer, because she would be more involved with the, with the communications and she's been a heavy part of this process from the beginning. Michelle?
This is Michelle. I think the 21st would be, is a doable date. We just need to get a social media statement out. That's how we would push it out. And we're, as far as I know, ready to go. We've taken all the precautions and I think we're ready to go. So the 21st would be more than enough time.
Question for you, either one of you. So if we say effective June 21st on this, does that mean that we cannot keep, or we cannot open downstairs until the 21st? Or is that just saying all of them will be open on the 21st?
I think it's more of a, yeah, we're, we're in the middle of a soft opening right now. So I think it would just be announced opening so that, of course, it's not so soft when we're sitting here broadcasting it during a town council meeting. But you know, our idea was to sort of slow roll the reopening because when our communications with the county, one of the concerns was, of course, it was a much different time was when they reopened. A lot of the people that the pandemic was most affecting were the ones that were coming out and participating at the county's government center. So that gave them calls for caution. So we were trying to avoid that same type of scenario. And it's typically, you know, our walk-up customers are more aged, we'll say, and you know, trying to be as protective as we can of the public. But at the same time, as I previously stated, our numbers are in a very, very good place right now.
Can I make a modification to this proclamation or declaration of civil emergency? So where it says effective June 21st, 2021, could we put the word "all town facilities will be open"? And that way, I think it covers everything by just adding the word "all" in there. And, and it means, you know, all of La Plata will be open. It, does that make sense? Is that okay to do? Or does someone else have any other suggestions? All right, Danielle, let's put "all" in there if we can. "All town facilities will be open with limited access for walk-in service." Do we need to say with limited access to walk in? Because...
I think we're still, yeah, we're still going to promote people doing business remotely when possible, but you know, and even try to do by appointment because we don't want to backlog, for example, in planning. Planning typically uses that side conference room. And so anything we can do to sort of stagger people coming to town hall, we will continue to recommend people make appointments and, you know, operate as we have. And, you know, we've been fully functional, even though we haven't been open for much the last year.
So could we do one more thing? And again, if, if it's not advisable, then just let me know. Could we also, instead of with limited access for walk-in services, may, but may have limited access for walk-in services? Because if you're opening the train station, are we saying that they have limited access there? Or are they fully open? When you're opening, you know, fill in the blank, whatever one that we have, one of our facilities. To me, just reading this, and that's where Matt, our legalese here too, may see it from different eyes. But if you say "may", but "may have limited access for walk-in service" or something of those, you know, those words, it does not preclude having a town facility open fully. Dave, do you have something to add?
Well, that was my question. Thank you. That was, I was going to ask for clarification of that. So you've already asked a question. Thank you.
Mayor, this is Michelle. And, and that makes sense specifically for the train station because it is not open on a daily basis as, as they have docents there to open stations, so.
Yeah. And I think that just covers us and doesn't put us, you know, paint us in the corner that everything has to have limited access for walk-in service. May, they may, they may not. And I think that gives us some flexibility.
If I may also, if we're done with section one, section two, I think deserves a "may" as well. Following the link to the online services in an effort to help slow the spread COVID-19, it'll talk about the board and commission meetings, "may continue to be conducted virtually". At this point, I do believe that a lot of our applicants, the members themselves, will probably want to continue with that virtual option. And we will have the ability to provide that. So it, the "may" there would probably benefit that statement as well.
I totally agree and a good, good suggestion on that. Does anyone else have any suggestions or? Do they see anything that you would like to update or change, alter? All right. Will we see this at the business meeting or do, can we vote on that now? What is, what is the proper procedure, Danielle?
This is scheduled as a special meeting and work session. So you do have that option to vote on it. If you would rather wait until next week, since you have, the date is going to be the 21st, we certainly could have a cleaned up version for you to vote on.
Counsel, are you okay with those three changes and voting on it now? Or do you prefer to wait? I'm fine either way.
I would prefer a clean version.
Okay. Matt?
I'd like to, I'd like to get moving on this as soon as possible, but I'll defer to the rest of the council. I think putting "may" in there allows discretion amongst the different entities among the town. And we're saying, look, we're ready to go. We're moving forward. So I'll defer to the rest of the council, but I would lean towards voting with the changes recommended.
Evelyn, I see you shaking your head. You're in agreement?
Yeah, Mayor, I am, I am in agreement with adopting with the recommended changes. We're only talking about three changes, "may" times in the document. So I don't think that's enough to hold it up.
Jim?
Yeah, I recommend we go ahead and go with it. Those three changes are minor.
All right. So Danielle, before I entertain a motion, what I'm looking at as I'm marking up everything, as you know I do, I see the changes that it would say Declaration of Civil Emergency. It would be dated June 8th, which is the title. And then effective one, number one would be effective June 21st, comma, 2021, "all town facilities will be open, but may have limited access for walk-in services." And then two, right after, as you pointed out, "business, business may continue to be conducted." Yep, right there. So I will, since I, I do have the paper, if you guys are okay with it. Normally I don't make motions, but I can make this a clean motion. I move that we, that we, I guess, yeah, I move that we adopt the Declaration of Civil Emergency dated June 8th, 2021, with the changes effective June 21st to include "all town facilities will be open, but may have limited access" and in the second part, "business may continue to conduct virtually." Do I have a second?
A second.
All right. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Dave, did I hear you? All opposed?
I'm opposed.
Okay. Motion carries four to one. All right. Our proclamation is done. Fantastic. Thank you. Good conversation, guys. Moving on, matters of council discussion, the Maryland State Retirement System, Law Enforcement Officers Pension System. And I'm assuming that would be the chief?
I'm here. Thank you, Mayor.
Floor is yours.
Danielle, can I bring up my screen?
Yes, certainly. I'll stop sharing and you can bring yours up.
Thank you. Can people see the screen?
No.
How about now?
No.
Great.
Chief, it's the little piece of paper icon with the arrow. Sometimes if you have multiple monitors, it's a little hard to choose which one. At least it is for me. So maybe that will help.
I, I emailed it to you. I don't know if you're able to bring it up. I'm trying to find it on my screen, what you're speaking of.
Okay, it's up, at least on my view, it's on, towards the top right by the leave button. It's right to the left of it. It's, it's like a little box with an arrow in it, and that is to share your screen. I'm working on opening my email now to be able to pull up.
All right, I hit it and hopefully it's being seen now, is it?
No. Generally, you have to select what, what you're wanting to share.
Got it.
Looks like it's coming through.
Excellent. Thank you. We better now?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mayor, thank you for allowing me to, to bring this up. I apologize, I have an abscessed tooth. And if my speech sounds a little slurred, I assure you, I have not been drinking. From, I, I wanted to share from the, the chief's point of view to begin. First thing I wanted the council to know is that there's no personal gain for me in this. I am a retiree. What we're discussing today about an enhanced retirement system is for the officers and, and not for me personally. The only thing I will gain out of this is the ability to keep qualified, well-trained staff. I've made it clear to other councils that I am uncomfortable as the chief of police discussing pay and benefit issues. At this time of year, I really believe chiefs should be concentrating on the work of staffing, operations, and administrative budget issues. In my previous job, the FOP worked diligently through either the meet and confer process or collective bargaining to bring topics such as competitive retirement programs to city leaders and elected officials. We're in a growing process as a, as a police department and as a town. We use meet and confer in green belt and then later collective bargaining. Meet and confer goes on all over the nation at budget time. It is constructive, it's informative, and it has the ability to produce positive change, not only for the organized labor group pursuing better pay benefits for whatever it may be, such as a fraternal order of police, but for all employees of a local government. A significant number of positive pay and benefit initiatives for all employees in green belt came through the FOP's meet and confer and collective bargaining processes. LPPD has changed quite a bit, and I like to think for the better over the last seven plus years. We've grown numerically, we've grown professionally, we've grown to earn the respect of our community, our residents, our business owners, and our allied law enforcement partners. However, wanting the best for this community, our business owners, and of course, the hard working officers at the La Plata Police Department, I find myself in an unenvied position of trying to balance asking for staff operational and administrative funding and requesting need of benefits in order to keep the agencies qualified, well-trained police officers in our ranks. During my presentation, facts will be facts. I'm not going to present anything other than that, except when I do present opinions, they'll be labeled as such. I'd like to take a moment just to qualify where my opinion comes from. I've been a police officer for 34 years. 26 of those years at a full service, award-winning, nationally accredited police department situated just outside of Washington DC. In my 34 years of policing, 13 years of those have been at the rank of lieutenant or above, with seven plus years as a chief of police. I currently serve on the Maryland Municipal Police Executive Association's executive board. In that position, I routinely interact with municipal chiefs from large and small agencies across the state. We routinely discuss our agency's challenges and the other things that our officers are facing. I also currently serve as a team leader for the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. I have conducted approximately 40 assessments across our nation. My reports are a determining factor if a candidate agency is accredited or reaccredited. Having worked in law enforcement agencies that are, having worked for a law enforcement agency that is a first ring suburb of the District of Columbia, Calea typically assigns me to assess full-service law enforcement agencies in first ring suburbs of major cities. I have assessed suburban police departments in Seattle, Detroit, Chicago, St. Louis, Indianapolis, Boston, Nashville, Hartford, Daytona, Columbus, and others. I say this so the council understands that when I do state an opinion, it's based on my observations at the local, regional, and national level. I also want to make clear that we support Mr. Manuel's pay and benefit study. We support other town employees receiving pay and benefit compensation, which is within their industry norms. And that's what I'm presenting today, a competitive retirement program that is within the law enforcement industry norm. Just to give you a little background, the request for a competitive retirement program certainly predates me as chief. Officers have requested in, in town employee benefit surveys, the need for a competitive retirement system for years before my tenure. In July 1, 2011, the Maryland State Pension System went from a, the, the current retirement plan to the new system for officers who were not grandfathered that requires officers, employees, to work many more years and have less funding to take care of their family and their retirement time. And currently, an officer in the program who's hired now at age 21 must work 35 years to be retirement eligible. This is, isn't even close to an industry norm in law enforcement, especially for those who are employed by an accredited law enforcement agency. The town provided funding to the police department in 2019 to conduct the actuarial study. That study is now dated. Our goal tonight, or one of our goals tonight, is for the council to authorize the funding for a new actuarial study. In the last several budget retreats, the police department has stated, moving our officers to a competitive retirement system is a top priority. We're having difficulty, we're facing difficulty, possibilities of retaining good employees. The FOP was kind enough to share the results of an internal survey, the survey that they conducted. It noted that officers enjoyed working for the police department. They liked the large-town, small-city atmosphere. Ten officers have considered leaving the agency or are currently exploring other opportunities. An exodus of any magnitude would be crippling to our agency. Seven years ago, we changed our hiring philosophy, and it seems to have worked well. Hiring lateral officers only when they bring needed skills and experience to the agency. But our preferred hiring of officers, we prefer to hire officers with no or little police experience. We like to send them to a police academy that is dedicated to teaching 21st century policing. We're able to teach them the La Plata way of customer service, and we're able to reinforce police academy training with quality annual in-service training. Currently, society demands much of its police officers. Agencies can no longer be satisfied with being the training ground for other agencies. Happy to have someone come, spend three or four years and then move on. It costs a lot to train. No longer can we be happy with being the retirement home for aged veterans. Of course, there are some exceptions, but for the most part, we have found that this recipe of hiring young officers, putting them in quality police academies, has provided for an excellent customer service experience for our residents and business owners. Maintaining our current quality employees is the only way we can build on this success. Moving to a competitive retirement system will assist the department in keeping well-qualified and well-trained employees. When we go to hire employees, we don't just try to hire people who would be good police officers. We look for those who will make good La Plata police officers. Our hiring practices are dictated to us by the Maryland Police and Correctional Training Commission standards and by the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies' best practices in recruiting, background investigations, and hiring. Our background process is extensive, it's time-consuming, and it's costly. We have difficulty with our, our recruitment. Competition for qualified applicants is the greatest it's been in the last 50 years or more. There are significant challenges with trying to recruit in the Washington metropolitan area when there's a lot of applicants out there. There's tough competition. Agencies are competing with state agencies such as the state police, the National Resources Police, and the Transportation Authority. We're in competition with large and small sheriff's departments and large county police departments. We're in competition with larger municipal agencies, and of course, every alphabetic soup federal agency that's out there. The lack of a competitive retirement system has directly prevented us from bringing diversity into our ranks. We had an applicant who was an Ocean City seasonal officer. She came out, she did a ride-along. She really liked the large-town, small-city atmosphere, but upon learning of our retirement system, she decided to move on to another agency. What studies have showed us is that diversity with rank, within the ranks, makes it easier to add more diversity. So when people come out and they do ride-alongs and they see that there's other people who look like them within the ranks, then they're more likely to want to be an applicant. And although we have no desire to take lateral entry, moving to a, a competitive retirement program would allow us, if needed, to bring in lateral people into, to our ranks, at different ranks. One of the things we know is that hiring is expensive. And when we look at the total cost of a competitive retirement system, we have to look at the cost of recruiting, background investigations, hiring processes, and training. We must look at the burnout factor of our field training officers who are asked to accept the liability to train new recruits over and over again. There's a general rule called the 10-to-1 rule in hiring in law enforcement, so that you must screen 10 applicants to get to one hirable candidate. One of the things is you never know when you're going to, may lose somebody, so you may invest a significant amount of money into someone to get them three-quarters of the way through the process to find out that they cannot be certified by the Maryland Police Training Commission. Just the physical, psychological, drug, and polygraph examinations cost about $1,500 per candidate. We've been fortunate as we have been able to get seating at the Prince George's County Police Academy and the Anne Rundle County Police Academy, and they have not charged us for the seat. But if we're unable to get seats in there because their academies are full, the other academies in the state charge between $4,000 and $5,000 per officer per seat. This slide just gives you a little idea of what it costs to hire an individual. Drug test or $54 a person. The physical, psychological, and polygraph exams are over $1,500 per person. The background investigator salary averages about $1,200 for a 40-hour investigation. Police academy expenses such as the salary and benefits of the candidate officer, non-reusable uniforms such as body armor cost over $1,800. And we show you the cost of the salary of the, the candidate during field training and the salary of the field training officer. These are real dollars that cost, that cost us when we have to continue to train and train and train. Because we don't have a lot of specialized, full-time positions, we ask each officer to adopt the specialized area. That way, it allows us to provide a higher level of service to our citizens and business owners. Cost of specialized training, when you add in the tuition, the per diem, and the equipment, can range from $500 to $2,000. Even free training at the training commission, by the time we pay per diem and lodging... Even free training at the training commission, by the time we pay per diem and lodging, we're always into about two-fifty or more per student. Some specialized, some of the specialized trainings require building block classes or annual recertification, which adds to the cost. LTPD has a well-trained and well-equipped group of officers. Officers with advanced training and certifications are highly sought after by allied law enforcement agencies. They are always looking to bring on a DRE. They're always looking to bring on a reconstructionist and evidence tech, whatever it might be. One of the things that I fear as a police chief is a rapid contraction of our agency. If just a few of those officers who said that they're out looking because of our non-competitive retirement system would leave, it would have a rippling effect across our entire agency. It has the possibility to end our partnership with the University of Maryland Charles Regional Medical Center as that officer would have to be pulled and put back in patrol. It would have the possibility of ending our partnership with the Charles County Sheriff's Office and our part on the Charles County High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Task Force. Loss of these positions would have a direct impact on the quality of service our officers can provide. It will also eliminate the force multiplier that we have with the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area Task Force officer. Would stop, wouldn't stop, but it would prohibit or it would limit our ability to investigate illicit drug activity in La Plata. Our patrol sergeants have already informed us that due to call volume and call complexity, they need five officers per shift now. We're at four, and we're grateful for that because this council, the past councils, have worked with us to get there. We've seen a record number of homicides in Charles County, and we've seen a record number of firearm seizures in La Plata. The need to have experienced police officers handling these calls have never been greater. The homicide per capita rate is twelve-point-two-five per thousand, hundred thousand in Charles County. The rate is a tad bit higher than that of Prince George's County, which is to our north. Firearms seizures and gun violence in La Plata, we've seen a homicide in Phoenix run. We've seen a shooting with non-life-threatening injuries on Patuxent Court. We had a shooting on Potomac Street with four shooters. Fortunately, nobody was hit. And we've seen over a dozen and a half gun seizures by officers proactively interdicting them on car stops and other encounters. Gun seizures and violence is a local, regional, and national trend, and it's never been a need for, a greater need for experienced officers to answer these type of calls. A competitive retirement program is a risk management tool. Our agency works diligently to mitigate the risk of liability. We do our best to mitigate it. Our high-frequency, high-liability policies are written to Calea standards and reviewed by a police legal expert. All of our other policies are written to Calea best practices. Annually, Calea does an onsite review. We're getting ready to go through our third one next month or in the next eight, six to, or four to six weeks. And they do every four years an onsite review. This helps us mitigate our liability. We have our practices looked at, and we have them look at our proofs of compliance to ensure we're walking the walk, not just talking the talk. Thanks to the council, we have good uptake to technology. Thanks to the council, we have a generous training budget. And thanks to the council, we have modern equipment. All these things go to make for better police officers, better service, and to mitigate risk management. We've proven that good risk management has benefits. The Chesapeake Insurance Fund is featuring, or has featured, the La Plata Police Department in a newsletter about how good policy and good practices help mitigate risk and bring down cost. Our officers are well-trained, they're well-equipped, and are provided best-practice-written guidance. There's one thing that no one in our command staff or our department can provide for officers during these turbulent times, and that's experience. What we know is experienced officers on low-frequency, high-liability incidents are better decision-makers. We know that experienced officers are better equipped to deconflex stressful encounters. We know experienced officers are community difference-makers, and we know that they're leaders inside and outside the agency. We have to make it a priority, even if it's the only reason is for a risk management mitigation, to consider moving our people to a enhanced retirement system. Other municipals have led the way. You see agencies with as few as six officers and the median household incomes and populations. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on these three slides, but what it shows you is that smaller agencies are involved, big-size agencies are involved, and certainly larger agencies are involved in this competitive retirement pension system. State agencies are also involved. One of the things that I understand is that there are other agencies in the Leop's Plan. Only those that we could verify in some sort of writing were included in this list. We believe that every state college system police department is a member of a Leop's. There's been some talk about the funding ratio. We've looked at the data. There are six funds in the Maryland Retirement System. Three of them are law enforcement-related. The funds are the Teachers' Combined Fund, the Employee Contribution System, which includes the sub-funds of employee retirement and the other fund of the Employee Pension System. There's the Maryland State Police Retirement System, the Judges' System, the Law Enforcement Officers Pension System, and the Correction Officer System. The Law Enforcement Officers Pension System in 2014 was funded at a rate of fifty-nine-point-nine-two. It is currently at sixty-five-point-nine-one. Its health has improved nine-point-nine percent, nine-nine percent over the past five years. The current system that we are in is at a sixty-eight-point-six-nine funding ratio. It has improved four-point-one-five percent in the past five years. Trend lines suggest that the Leop's Fund ratio will equal or exceed the current ECS Fund in the future. There's been a lot of discussion that Leop's is unsustainable and could threaten the overall fiscal health of the retirement fund itself in the town. There doesn't appear to be any merit to that belief. And I believe the chart shows that unequivocally. We're at a tipping point. I'm not an alarmist. I never have been. I don't believe in coming and saying something is absolute unless it's absolutely necessary. And as chief, we really need to pay attention to the survey that the FOP brought to us. They didn't have to. I was grateful for that survey. We have qualified, well-trained officers, and those officers have a lot of options. Allied agencies are purchasing academy contracts. They're offering robust hiring bonuses. They're giving credit for years of experience. The Leop's Plan is much of a Chevrolet. It's not a Cadillac system like other agencies have. We're just asking to be in that norm of a Chevrolet system, something that will help us keep our people. I think the FOP survey provided a wake-up call for me as chief, and I think it's provided a wake-up call for others. It was clear in the survey that officers like working for the police department but need a competitive retirement system. They deserve it. A rapid contraction of the agency has the possibility of ending some of our most, some of our best partnerships, and that's something we need to try to avoid. It is physically impossible for an officer to work thirty-five years in this stressful environment. Studies show officers have a shorter life expectancy. I'd be happy to share the Buffalo Study or any of the others with anybody who would be interested in looking at them. Talking to chiefs across the state and across the country, there are very few applicants. During our last process, we received nine applications. Four people appeared for the test, two passed the written and physical agility. It doesn't do well. We don't believe that we have great odds of getting at least one of these people through to final hiring. We're hoping we're wrong. But as you recall, the ten-to-one rule, that's when ten people take the exam. Currently, we have no pending applications. I'm afraid that the consequences of inaction is going to cut into the customer service that our residents and business owners have become used to and deserve. I think we really must ask, why are we working so hard to hire and train good people just to have them join another agency? Or all sorts of, I know of no other agency that's asked officers to bring concessions to the table. But our officers have offered. Officers have made it known that they would bypass a merit raise and are willing to pay more to get into this system. We're living in unusual times. Our officers worked through the COVID pandemic. Six of them got ill. One of them was critically ill. Others who were exposed were quarantined. It was all job-related. Those officers that remained healthy juggled their schedules to ensure the residents and businesses were safe during COVID. Many picked up extra shift and worked over their normal shift. And I am extremely grateful to Sergeant Bagley, who stepped up and helped during that time. Our officers worked the rallies and the protests during the summer months. Our officers are routinely answering calls now for incidents involving firearms and shots fired. Our officers on the front line of the mental health crisis epidemic that we're seeing every day. It's my recommendation tonight as chief of police that the council authorize a new actuarial study. It would cost between seven and eight thousand dollars to determine the current cost to move eligible officers into the Leop's System. If needed, we would gladly reach out to the smaller municipalities that have entered into the system and like-sized sheriff's departments to see how they were able to make that move. Once the actuarial study is complete, we're asking that we have the time to sit down with council and have a robust discussion on enhancing the agency's retirement system. We fully support enhancements for every town employee, and I don't want anyone to misconstrue that. The agency knows what it needs, our agency, to be competitive. And we brought that discussion to the town management and council tonight. We fully support Mr. Manuel's upcoming salary and benefit study, and we really hope that it becomes a roadmap like it does in other jurisdictions to help us achieve what we need to achieve to keep good, hard-working, well-trained, quality employees in the police department and throughout the town. And I can certainly answer any questions. I know that was a lot.
Thank you, chief. And I did have an opportunity to go through and thoroughly read your presentation. And I just have a question. First of all, I, well, I have several questions. You know me. I never shy from that. When you're looking at, when you were comparing ECS and Leop's, you noticed there was just a discrepancy of a couple percentage. And you even mentioned that Leop's will surpass, could surpass ECS. When I pulled numbers, I compared municipalities because that's what we are and not putting in all of the state combined with municipalities. Currently, our ECS, as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty is the latest that I got. We're at an eighty-two-point-seventy-one percent is the current retirement system that we currently subscribe for all of our employees, whereas Leop's was a sixty-eight-point-five. So there's quite a bit of difference as far as being fully funded with ECS at eighty-two percent and we're at sixty-eight. Your numbers there, you put in it was sixty-eight and sixty-five percent. Leop's is sixty-five percent. Where did you, can you, I guess, expand upon those numbers when I'm, I guess I'm looking at the municipalities only?
Sure, if you want to. I'm looking for the memo. There was an attachment to the master memo with five pages from the retirement system sources, and that is where those numbers came from.
And I have that, and that one says it's state and municipal. And I am just doing municipal because that's, obviously, I don't really care about the rest of the state because that includes the government and not just municipalities. So it includes everything. Whereas if we're going to compare apples to apples, it actually has the, the data I pulled was from the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System, and it shows for 2020 that Leop's had a funded ratio of sixty-eight-point-five, but our ECS was eighty-two-point-seventy-one. So that's the difference on that. And I don't know if Kevin is on, if he can, since he's the number guy, he may think that I'm way off base. Kevin, do you have anything that could substantiate either of these on here? I'm looking at the board summary, and it's June thirtieth, 2020, and it's from the Maryland State Retirement and Pension System.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kevin Greenville, Treasurer for the town. Mayor, you are correct. When you look at participating governmental units within the Maryland State Pension, which is what we are, our contribution rate is calculated based off the total for the participating governmental units. So the numbers in Chief Schenner's presentation tonight, that was taking in the state and the municipalities. We need to look at just the municipal numbers. And the numbers you're referencing are from the June thirtieth, 2020 actuarial study that was conducted by the Maryland State Pension, and that is available on the website. So when you just look at the municipal numbers and you look at how they calculate their rates, there is a significant difference in how well-funded our current pension is versus Leop's, and it is eighty-two-point-seven-one versus sixty-eight-point-five.
Kevin, the fund, the same pot of money? Is it the state money and the municipal money in the same pot?
No, chief. I guess it is, yes, in a way, but when they calculate our contribution rate, they do two different numbers, one for state agencies and then one for participating governmental units, which is what we are.
And don't state agencies pay a much higher percentage into Leop's and to others?
Yes, they do. I think they pay about forty-two percent, but also the ECS as well. They pay a much higher percentage. State employees do. But our current pension is funded a lot better when you just look at what we are versus pulling in that state funding or state pension because the state pension includes three different pension systems. I think one of them dates all the way back to nineteen-eighty, and they've made a lot of corrections over the years.
But it is the same pot of money. Am I correct? All that, the paychecks come out of the same pot of money?
Well, no, because they do do two different actuarial studies, and they do calculate the contribution rate based off our numbers for the municipality. That's why if you go on and look at the state's website, the retirement system, and you look at the, there's two contributions. There's one for state agencies, and then there's one for participating governmental units, and that's what we are. We're participating governmental units.
And our rate of what we pay as a town is significantly less than that of a state agency. Am I correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, for ECS. But I think it, you know, points to, you know, where does that, you know, the health of the municipal Leop's? You know, it definitely comes into play when you do look at these numbers, which is what we should look at and what we should reflect on because that is how the contribution rate is calculated.
But if it's the same pot of money and the Maryland Transportation Authority and the university systems are part of paying into that same pot of money, the health would be the overall health of everything, correct?
No, because they, they look at these two differently. They do separate actuarial studies, and how they calculate the contribution rate is purely on the municipal, municipal numbers.
And the municipal rate is cheaper than the state rate. So what we would pay into this system is significantly cheaper than what the Maryland Transportation Authority pays into it. Am I correct?
Well, but chief, we're specifically talking about the health of the pension system. And when you look at the actual numbers that are used to calculate our contribution rate, the, our, that discrepancy is significantly different. The ECS is much better funded. What we are as a municipality and how they calculate that, we're at eighty, almost eighty-three percent. Leop's is at sixty-eight. So, you know, I think it's important to look at those numbers and use those numbers because that is ultimately what we are and how those contribution rates are calculated.
Have we ever known any fund for the Maryland State Retirement Have we ever known any fund for the Maryland State Retirement System to fail?
I'm sorry, could you repeat your question, Chief?
Sure. Have we ever known a fund from the Maryland State Retirement System to fail?
I'm not familiar with one failing, but I am familiar with rates being raised significantly, benefits being cut. So once again, I'm, I'm just sort of saying, we, we should use the, the, the data that, that correlates correctly to what we are and how those contribution rates are calculated.
Well, I think we'll have to agree to disagree on this one, Kevin, but I do respect you and I respect your opinion. There's no doubt about it.
Chief, and I respect you too, but this is why they have two different contribution rates and why they do separate actuarial studies.
Right. But it's the same pot of money that the checks come out of. My, my monthly check says it came from LEOPS, as does someone who retired from the Maryland Transportation Authority or the University of Maryland College Park.
Right. But when we talk about how our contribution rate is calculated, and when we talk about the funded ratio and the health of these pensions, we need to look at the, the correct numbers.
Well, I think I am looking at correct numbers. I also think that we can go back and look at the history of what LEOPS has cost municipalities over the past five, 10, 15 years and show that it has grown a little bit, but so has the ECS. And I think that we can show that there's not going to be dramatic increases, at least looking at the historical perspective.
So Chief, one of the concerns I have too, again, I will speak for myself. I am very supportive of having a better retirement for all of our employees. I, I think it's long overdue and we've been fighting for this. I've got emails all the way back from probably two months after I was elected in 2017, from Alafon to all the way up to now. So we have been looking at it, but you're right, there has been no action. One of the things that concerns me a lot, and I'm going to speak as affiliated with the military is right now is a bad time for police officers all around. So you have people hypothetically that are in LEOPS right now. And they are at fifty years old or they have done their, they've accrued, I want to make sure I say this correctly. They have, they're eligible after 10 years, or they've accrued retirement allowances payable at 50 years. So it's 25 years of service or age 50 when they're eligible. So they're 50, they're 55, they're whatever it is, and you're going to see people bailing because right now this country is struggling. They're struggling with the authority of police, and you know how I feel about that. I'm not even going to go into that, but the perception right there is, so what happens? How does it affect a department that has LEOPS? That when people start bailing and retiring is probably the proper words, that they start retiring in droves?
That I can't answer, Mayor. You know, we're in uncharted waters as a country. What I do know is inaction, we're going to be one of those agencies that have people bail and we're not going to be able to answer calls for service, we're not going to be able to provide quality service. And as a chief, that's alarming to me.
Oh, and I understand that. And one other thing that has just been bugging me because I am an absolute numbers person, and I know it wasn't you that put this out, but I have been stopped by several people within the business community and within the residents that they are so alarmed that we have had six officers leave within the last five years. Now I do my math and, and I look at that and I have not been able to, besides one going to the private sector, three retiring, my buddy going over there running for sheriff, one left because of not having the afforded the opportunity to have overtime and two for disciplinary reasons. I don't see where any have left that has said because of our retirement. And we've been able to hire, as of a couple days ago, we have sixteen new people in your department, three of them being admin. But since I became mayor, now of those, a couple of them left because of one not going, oh, and one didn't finish the academy. So there was another one. So can you please, so I can sleep at night, tell me where those six people that the FOP has, businesses have said, private citizens have said that six people have left the agency seeking better employment?
We, we have seen people leave. And I don't have the list in front of me. If I have the FOP on the list, on the, the call, they're more than welcome to, to speak up. We lost one back to a municipality in Prince George's County who went back for pay issues. We lost one that went to the private sector, as we know. We lost one that did not like the schedule as much and went over to an allied agency where he can work a more regular day shift. And again, there was, we have lost five or six. All are not coming to me right now. But as where I am sounding the alarm and why I'm sounding the alarm, I have ten that says they're getting ready or considering to leave. This is, this could be damaging to us.
Oh, and I understand that. And that's why I, across the board, across the board, we need to look at this. And, and I, I think that you sounding the alarm has gotten the attention of, you know, council had approved this a few years ago as far as getting an actuary study done for everyone. And I think now you guys are sounding the alarms and this will get done. This council will get it done to look at all of the benefits, to include everything so that we can sit down and compare apples to apples instead of just saying, you know, this is what you need for a retirement. And I understand that. And that's why, I guess I was a little confused as far as coming to council and asking us to fund an updated actuary study when I guess that's within your authority, it's less than twenty thousand. Unless you're asking for our support.
Well, I'm asking for your support. I didn't budget it. You know, it, seven thousand dollars is a lot in a budget. I will make it happen out of my budget if I have to. The old salaries, actuarial study went stale and we had no action on it. When we talk about industry norms, I am trying to bring a retirement system that is within industry norms to law enforcement. There is a reason why three of those funds and arguably four, if you count judges in the retirement system are law enforcement related. It's competitive out there. We have to be competitive. If we're not competitive, we're going to see young, talented people that we have invested tens of thousands of dollars in go to allied agencies. It's where we're at. We're at a tipping point. And as a chief, you know, I've worked sixty hours a week for the last seven years to build this agency. To watch this possibly just walk away in a short amount of time is pretty difficult to see. So yeah, it's my police department, but it's also your police department and it's the resident's police department. And if you want to have good quality people, you have to have pay and benefits that are competitive.
Evelyn?
I see your hand raised. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Chief Schenner, for your presentation. It was very well done and very well received. I just have two questions for you. And Kevin, I would also ask for your input. Chief Schenner, the initial comment, you said, the goal is to have a competitive retirement system. Are you saying that the competitive retirement system is LEOPS? Or do you want a competitive retirement system and it doesn't have to be LEOPS? I just want clarification on that.
We are open to anything. When we look out there, we know what our competitors have. So we know that there's ease of moving into a system that's backed by the full faith and credit of the Maryland State Government. There's advantages to that. But we're, we're open to anything that makes us competitive. We are aware of municipalities that manage their own retirement system. Most of them are larger than us and it requires quite a bit of work.
Yes, sir.
I don't know if we're there as a, as a municipality or not.
Okay.
What I know is, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah. So, but you're not saying that it has to be LEOPS. You're saying a competitive retirement system. So if we were to identify a competitive retirement system for everybody, and of course you're talking about the police officers, and I totally get it because that is very important, especially with the growth of our town as we move from being what they consider to be rural to more, you know, urban. We've got, we've got growth and I get that. So if we identify a competitive retirement system that's not necessarily LEOPS, is that an option for your, for you?
Yeah, any, anything that's competitive is an option. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so then, one thing that was said during our conversations, and I wanted to, and I had some further, further conversations to get an understanding. It was the vesting schedule that made our, our retirement system not competitive in your minds. It's understood that it's thirty-four years and forty-two percent for our current retirement system and twenty-five years and seventy-five percent for LEOPS. That's your understanding?
I think it's twenty, twenty-five years and fifty percent for LEOPS. And then it can go up, up to two percent a year for five years.
Okay, okay. Kevin, if you don't mind, if you can explain the thirty-four years and forty-two percent for our vesting schedule. I wrote down notes, but I don't want to, you know, misinterpret my notes.
Yeah, Evelyn, that, I believe that's a number by Chief Schenner. I, I didn't come up with that number, thirty-four years, and I don't know what age is being hired and what salary is being used to calculate that, so I.
Okay. So that's not, that's not our vesting schedule for all of our officers across the board, thirty-four years and forty-two percent?
It, it depends on when they come in, what their salary is, each, each person within, even within LEOPS, you know. Once you work twenty-five years, you're eligible for a drop, which is a very good benefit that you have to work an additional five years. So everything's very dependent on, on when you come in, what your salary is and how many years you work.
Can I chime in on that, Councilwoman? This is Captain Becker.
Yes, sir, Captain Becker. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Those numbers that you just read off as far as the age, or I'm sorry, the number of years to get a percentage, I, I use that as a twenty-two-year-old member of the La Plata Police Department. Most of the people we have been recruiting are in that younger category. The formulary for the current pension system that we use is a formula of ninety. It's, it's, it's the number of years you work plus your age plus, and you have to get to this formula of ninety. So that is where the twenty-one-year-old or twenty-two-year-old must work forty-three years. You then add their age after those year, thirty-four years of service, and that's how the formula of ninety equals. And then the percentage at that point, based on my contact. Sorry about the feedback, was forty-three percent.
Thank you, Captain Becker.
Yes, ma'am.
Could everyone make sure that they're muted if they are not speaking, please, so that we are able to hear everyone?
So I did, you know, I also wanted to know how many officers we'd had to leave on the organization. And I only, and there were only six that were presented to me and none actually left for better opportunities. One went to the private sector, but there were none according to the data that I received that indicated they left because of the retirement benefits or that they went to another law enforcement agency. So if you have other data, appreciate being able to see that, Chief Schenner.
Yeah, we, we lost one to a municipality in Prince George's County. And we lost one to the Calvert County Sheriff's Office.
And Chief wasn't the one that we lost to the Prince George's? He was, he came over from a different organization, but it was because he was looking for overtime and we don't do that here. He was looking for extra opportunities.
He, yeah, he, Mayor, you're correct. But one of the things he told us upon leaving is if we ever got LEOPS, he would put the extra part-time money aside and try to lateral back. But you're right. We don't have a lot of secondary employment in the town for the officers to work. And in other organizations, where I came from, it was a, a million dollars a year that was out there for officers to, to go out and work secondary employment.
Oh, I know. Well, I wish we did have that, but I guess that, that's a private sector thing and that's an internal, could be an internal thing for you guys. You guys, you keep a great house there. So I am not one to say whether overtime should be at different places, they should do that or not. And the one that went to Calvert, my buddy Ted, he was running for sheriff and that's what he was positioning himself for, right?
Uh, yeah, and then the fight workout. We also lost an officer to the Charles County Sheriff's Office.
Oh, that within the last, since May of 2017?
Uh, was probably a little bit before that, but we lost him to, and, and the sheriff's department lost him to the Maryland Park and Planning Commission Police Department.
Okay. Yeah, because I was, I was looking at that and I was like, I didn't see any, but that's, that's good. I mean, and I understand that ten are looking at leaving to go elsewhere, but isn't the closest LEOPS Bowie?
If they were looking to go to LEOPS, Bowie is the closest, Greenbelt. Or they could go to the Charles County Sheriff's Department, which has a Cadillac plant or Maryland State Police or wherever that may be. So like I said, I'm looking for a Chevrolet. I'm not looking for a Cadillac. I, I just got to be competitive. Our folks tend to like working here. They like the community, they like the people they interact with. They tell the FOP that the, the management's not too bad either and they don't mind working for them. So those are all good things, but keeping them here during these trying times, there's nobody out there to hire, I can tell you that. So everybody's sheep stealing.
Yeah, that's true. Councilman Challenger.
Thank you, Mayor James. Thank you, Chief Schenner and Captain Becker for presenting tonight. I know as a new council, we've heard for a long time, the challenges, even leading up to running, okay, on the campaign, the challenges that the town police has in hiring and retention, and I appreciate you bringing specific numbers. And from your perspective, where the town could be losing out if we lose officers as it relates to not having a competitive retirement system. I do want to ask you a couple of specific questions about your presentation definitions-wise, and then go into some overlap where maybe the town police offers something that we're not getting currently or don't expect to get from the county. Number one, you talked about 21st century policing being part of your aim in hiring and retention. Could you just briefly explain what you're talking about with that?
Sure. After Ferguson, President Obama put a commission together to make recommendations on how police departments could police in their communities better. The 21st Century Policing Report came out with five pillars. The pillars, and I, I can bring it up, and I actually prepared something for the previous council showing where we as an agency hit every one of those pillars. The fifth pillar talks about employee wellness. Talks about making sure they take care of themselves, make sure that they have decent retirement systems at the end. It seems like a lot of departments hit the, the first four pretty well, but the fifth pillar is the one where there's always some kind of lacking. You know, money for things like sending officers or allowing officers join a gym or whatever, something along those lines. There never seems to be funds for that, a part of the wellness program. But it's a philosophy that the 21st century policing philosophy is best practices as prescribed by this committee, put together by President Obama. And when you send people to police academies that specialize in 21st century policing, we're teaching them how to go out, be good police officers in today's society, treating people with respect all the time. And having a different mindset. Instead of a warrior's mindset, we're asking them to have a guardian's mindset. We want them to have that warrior's heart. We want them to have that warrior's heart, but we want them to have that mindset of a guardian. We don't want to go in and over-police neighborhoods. We want to meet people where they're at. And that's what 21st century policing police academies are teaching. That is extremely important to me as a chief, that we provide the best quality training that we can, because that's the only way we're going to be successful. Because when you hire an officer, hopefully you're hiring them for a minimum of 25 years. If you got them for 25 years, you either got 25 years of goodness, or you got 25 years of headaches. I'd much rather have 25 years of goodness and send them to academies that are going to teach them how to be successful.
Okay, thank you for explaining that. Another thing I wanted to clarify, in one of your slides, you talked about a force multiplier, that La Plata Police Department acts as a force multiplier with the Charles County Sheriff's Office as it relates to illicit drug activity in La Plata. And I know, just in my volunteering in previous years with the Crime Watch, you know, 301 corridor is, is very heavily trafficked, obviously from the north and the south. But how is it, what do you mean by force multiplier with Charles County Sheriff's Office? Practically speaking, how does La Plata play a role there?
Sure, police departments have choices. We could have gone to the council and asked for a two- or three-member unit to enforce drug activity in La Plata. Instead of doing that, we joined forces with the sheriff. We entered into an MOU, so we have one officer assigned to this unit, and the Sheriff's Department has several. So when they come in and investigate cases in La Plata, instead of having one detective, I have the whole resources to Charles County Sheriff's Office Narcotics Unit at our disposal. Conversely, when they go into Waldorf and they need an extra body, our officer is sworn and is able to go in and assist there. Because of the Sheriff's Department's relationship with feds, they also have federal resources that they can bring in. So if we're working a pretty good case in La Plata, not only do we have our own detective, we have the resources of the Charles County Sheriff's Office and any federal agencies that may be affiliated with them, and their resources to come in and help. And let me, let me just give this, a few years ago, we worked a, an opioid case. We knew that the opioids coming into La Plata was coming from Annapolis. We worked with our partners, and it took 20 officers to tailgate, to tail, trail this gentleman from La Plata to Annapolis and back in order to make that apprehension, to show where they went and where they came back. That's a force multiplier right there when you're a 22-person agency, and you need 22 people to, to conduct surveillance like that, who are professionally trained. So, those sorts of things, and, and later on, when we make a presentation, we'll talk about other opportunities that possibly present themselves for force multipliers. But that is what I was referring to as a force multiplier. Instead of having one officer in-house looking at drug cases, we have the full resources of the Charles County Sheriff's Office and their federal partners.
Okay, now, as far as MOUs go, that's not uncommon for municipalities to have an MOU. Like, for example, Bowie may have one with Prince George's County, and yet, and yet, as far as we know, Bowie is still part of the Leop's program.
Yeah, Bowie's still part of the Leop's. All those municipalities that were listed in that, that slide presentation that have found it equitable for them to put their officers into that system.
As it relates to the formula that Captain Becker discussed, I mean, you know, practically speaking, what's the danger of having more senior-aged town officers that still have not vested as it relates to 21st century policing in your goals?
We do bring in people. We have an officer that spent a career at the Prince George's County Police Department, currently assigned to the Medical Center. He's a great guy. He does fantastic work, and he's an exception. But when you hire, we've, we've also hired some folks that brought them in, that have some years on. They don't want to work special events. They don't like making arrests, and they think they're coming to a retirement home. They really do. We're going to answer 10,500 calls for service this year. We have, unfortunately, we've had a homicide. We, we're seeing gun seizures like I've never seen in my career. So getting senior officers at times to want to engage after they've already spent a full career, for some of them, it's difficult. Others, it's not, but for some of them, it is.
I know in the past, and I think Kevin may be able to speak to this. I know, we've talked about different programs, right? And, and we know that part of this actuarial study, I think, is going to help us understand what other options there are out there that may serve as, as Councilwoman. Evelyn Bryant Ward suggested that maybe there is another option that could be, could fit the bill. But I know Charles County has a fantastic system. Is, is there a way that we can, and I know it's been talked about, is there a way that we can work our way into that program whatsoever? Is there a connection that we have there that could at least see the feasibility of that? Because I, I think, you know, La Plata Police deserve the best that there is out there, and if it's at a lower potential cost to the town, that's a win-win. What have been the discussions about that, or is there any shot at that?
I don't know if there's a shot at that or not. It was mentioned by a member of the last council. During my early discussions with the Sheriff's Department, it didn't seem like the, they thought it would be worth bringing in, in, in determining the cost, but it's something we can go ahead and look at.
I mean, if we're going to be looking at all of our options, I feel like, if we can, I mean, well, this is the time to do it. So that might be something worth exploring. Lastly, as, as Kevin, when we're allocating the, I think we have it as, it's either $50,000 or $75,000 for the benefit study. I mean, does that include a new actuarial study as it relates to Leop's, or does that not include that?
Councilman Challenger, just to clarify something. The actuarial study is, is purely looking at the cost to enter into Leop's of our current officers with their salaries and with their years of service. So it's not going to make any recommendations on anything. It's just purely providing what our net entrant liability is, and also how they calculated it, which is a ton of pages and what the actuaries do. The class and comp study and that compensation, including benefits, are our total compensation. That does not include the actuarial study.
I mean, is that, is that, could it? I mean, is, I mean, we've got 75 put aside. I mean, it's what, five to seven grand, or?
It's certainly possible monetary-wise within the budget. But if, if you're talking about the, I highly doubt actuaries and actuarial firm would also be able to provide a class and comp study. It's possible. I mean, I'm sure there are some big self-service firms out there.
I mean, if we could, if we could avoid diverting town police department money for a retirement benefit actuarial study, if we're looking at the entirety of the town employees at the same time, I mean, if there's a way to do that, I think we should. And then, lastly, just a comment, I mean, I, I think these discussions can get, can get heated. But I, I do think, I speak for the council, chief, and captain, and any of the police officers on here. We appreciate your work. We appreciate your service. I think in general, the town council wants to look at ways to, to support the police department. And I think it is, I think it's got to be understood that with any employment opportunity that there is out there, as a small business employee, I mean, you, you've got to be out of your mind to think that people aren't looking around at other retirement options, whether they go to Bowie, or they go to Charles County. I mean, they're right there. You have a shelf life as an active-duty police officer where you're effective and you can keep your own self safe with the level of risk that you have. And I think, I think the council wants to appreciate that in a way that makes sense for the town. And I appreciate you bringing the numbers for this discussion to get started, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Challenger. Councilman Goldsmith, what do you have? Ah, you're muted.
Chief, it was an excellent presentation. A lot of information you have there that I think we, as a council, need to be able to read ourselves. We've got a lot of homework to do, to understand everything that you've had access to and the things that the comptroller has access to as well. I do have one specific question. You were talking about the idea of, you do bring on some people who finished a tour of duty in another location. When they come on, if they join the, us, and they were not Leop's before, what kind of cost would we have at that point in time to bring them on? And is that a consideration when you make that hire?
Well, usually when I go to make a hire, Councilman Goldsmith, I usually hire the last person standing. I don't really have a lot of options. If, if they're a retiree from the Maryland program, whether it is the ECS program or Leop's, they're not eligible to go back into the system. I retired from Greenbelt. I get no retirement benefits for working more years at the town of La Plata. So the town doesn't have to pay their cost, and I don't have to pay the 7% in. Most of the, what we find is when we do get these people who do second retirements is because they worked at an agency like the Prince George's County Police Department, where they only had to work 20 years, could retire, and then move on at a younger age into another agency. They would have to go into, like anybody else, into the Maryland retirement system. We're, we're not allowed to not bring somebody into the system who has not retired from it. So whether they've got, they're 21 or they're 50, we still have to pay retirement benefits into the system unless they're a retiree from Maryland Retirement Program. I hope that answered your question.
Well, the key thing I keep hearing is buy into the program. There's a big initial upfront cost. So if you do hire someone who's 50, has already done someplace else, is he costing more to buy into the system because he's had a previous retirement or not?
No, no, sir, and I, I didn't understand your question. So when we hire somebody new, there's no buy-in for them. And that's why we think, we've lost some senior people. We lost Sergeant Cunningham to retirement. We've lost a couple others. We actually believe the buy-in to the program initially may be cheaper than the last actuarial study because we have senior people who aren't ready, getting ready immediately to retire. We backfilled some of those people with some much younger people. So on the actuarial, they're probably going to be much cheaper to buy into the system than some of the 10-year people that we have who have left.
Okay.
And I apologize, this abscess is making me sound, at least to me.
Well, I think we've got a lot of education we have to do for ourselves, all of us upon the council. And anything you can offer of a study that you've seen someplace else, I'd be happy to look at it and read it. And if the staff could put it all together in one poll for each one of us to be able to look at it at our leisure, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Chief, just when I thought I had a handle of it, that, that last statement kind of threw me for a loop. So if someone comes over that has retired from whatever county, and they've done 20 years, but they have not started drawing off of their retirement pension. So they've done their 20 years with the police department. They're not eligible yet to draw from their retirement, and they come to us and say that they are, let's just say they're 45. We then, if we have Leop's, in order to get that person, which they said everybody, mandatory membership for permanent employees in eligible positions is what the Leop's says. So in order to get that 45-year-old in with 20 years' experience, we have to do a buy-in. Is that correct?
We would if we're going to give them 20 years of experience, but it's, if they're leaving another agency because they're retired, I, I don't see us buying that 20 years for them. And usually, you put that back on the person. If you want to buy in, you can buy in. But those who that we're, we're seeing out there, and I'm not even sure I would entertain hiring somebody under that, that umbrella. What we see is, it's like the officer from Prince George's County. He did his 20, 22 years. He's pulling his pension, and now he's coming here, and he's starting it at year zero with the Leop's pension system. We're not going to buy that 20 and have him have that. He's already getting what he's getting from that previous agency's retirement program. And when he joins here, it's, it's like they're starting at their first year. So you get some, some, and, and we see a lot of this in, in law enforcement. You get that individual who does their 20 years in the military, you know, and they went in at 18, they're 38 years old. They're getting that military pension. They have lots of experience. Maybe they were an MP or something like that. Now they're starting with a, a local police department like La Plata. They're starting at year zero in the, in the retirement program. So they're going to have to work whatever years in order to earn their eligibility. Does that make sense to you, Mayor?
It, it does. So, and this has been a burning question that I've written down probably 15 times, and, and, and maybe this is the appropriate time to ask. I guess the big, there's two big issues here that I think I struggle with. I'm just going to speak to myself. One is, as I mentioned, being equal across the board. I know what police depart, the police do. I also know, you know, everybody has a self-worth, and to, to, to do something for 22 and not to do 65, I can't do that. But are they going to be equal? Probably not. So what if we said, yep, we'll sign on for Leop's, but everybody starts off at ground zero and not do the $1.4 million buy-in? And everybody starts off because people have already worked, and maybe I'm not understanding this. So people have worked like, it doesn't matter who, someone who has been with the department for 10 years. They paid in 10 years into the Maryland State Retirement Center, I mean, the pension plan. What if we start everybody off at ground zero? Because you have someone that may have been in the agency for 20 years, and then you have someone that is just starting off. Is that person worth more than the other one? Yeah, probably it's training-wise, but everybody should start, what if we start everybody off with ground zero? Like you said, you know, with someone coming over that's already getting a, is that a possibility?
I, I don't think the retirement system would treat it that way, because they're going to take money out of the ECS system and move it into Leop's. So if I'm understanding you, you're asking somebody who has put 20 years into the La Plata Police Department, now you're going to ask them to work 25 more years, 45 years, in order to get a pension out of Leop's?
I didn't know that's, that's the way that it works. I, so that buy-in, they're taking it from the ECS?
That's my understanding. They take it from that system. They move it over into the Leop's pot of money. And then there is a difference. And I don't think it was 1.4 million. I think it was about 1.15 or something like that. And I have the study sitting here in front of me. I can, I can pull it out if you need it. I, and again, I think if we do do this actuarial, there's a good chance we're going to find out that it's going to be less money for the buy-in. And initially, you know, we were told that the buy-in probably wasn't the biggest thing. It was the, the annual rollover. And the buy-in can be amateurized over 25 years if the town decides to go that way into the Leop's program.
So do we need to do, so hypothetically, they say, okay, you're going to do Leop's, because we know it's not going to be 1.4 million. It may be 1.2 million. What is the purpose of paying someone $7,000 because one of your officers left who was on the, had been there for years? I don't know how long Eddie had been there, but I know it's been a very long time. And you have some younger ones come in. How much is that actually going to change the, the dollars?
That I don't know, because I'm, you know, I'm not an actuarial. I wish I was, and maybe we could save some money, but, but I'm not. And, and, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic whatsoever. I understand your point. When you bring people in new, and they have to pay 25-plus years into this system, the buy-in is going to be cheaper because they only have six months, eight months, whatever it is, compared to preparing for a person who has 22 years, in three years are getting ready to retire, and you're going to have to have funding to pay out their retirement over the course of whatever the life expectancy is.
I think that as we talk, we have more questions. I know I do because and I've got to kind of wrap my head around it a little bit more. Evelyn, I see that you have another question.
Yeah, Chief Chen, mine is really easy. So if 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 you really wanted Leops, if that's just the thing that we have to have, and we're talking about recruitment, would it be possible to not do buy-in for existing officers and just start with the new officer that we look to recruit as a part of our marketing strategy to onboard them? Now we have a competitive plan for new officers coming in and the officers that are in existence will maintain the retirement benefits that we currently have. Would that be something that was acceptable? Not looking at past, but just looking at future recruitment opportunities to make us more competitive.
I understand what you're saying. I think I would lose all my experienced people. I think they would just walk away. Because usually when you see it, it's the direct opposite, you know, with tiered contracts, say at a grocery store, usually the benefits are for the people who are senior and are there now. And then they weaken as time goes on. And that's why you see two, three, and four-tiered contracts at grocery stores or in other retail environments. I don't know if that's the same in healthcare or not, but it certainly is in retail and in government.
Well, I will tell you, in the town of La Plata, recruitment for me is just as difficult. And I think we have excellent benefits. So me getting new doctors and new staff is just as hard when MedStar up the road pays $2 or $3 more than me. And I think our benefits are great. So I think we're in the same predicament. And I call people that you're referring to retired in place. They want to come and retire in place and that's not attractive at all. So I do understand.
Thank you. Excellent. All right. Does council have any, I mean, hang on, I'm waiting for council first. Captain Becker, let me ask if they have any questions. Council, any other questions?
Yeah, I do. This is Councilman Jenkins.
I just didn't even see you. You were so.
Well, I'm just letting everybody else ask the questions first so I can chime in. First of all, thank you, Chief, and Captain Becker for the information and your service. And I was very heartened to hear you talk about 21st century policing and particularly, and I wrote this down, the guardian mind, but the warrior spirit. And so I applaud you for saying that because obviously the world has changed a lot. I also want to thank Councilman Trolinger for his questions because that was one of the questions I was going to ask with respect to the actuarial study and what actually is that. And but my question is, how soon could that happen? Could you do an actuarial study?
If we commissioned it in the next couple of weeks, it usually takes about six to eight weeks for it to return. Now, the nice thing is because we did it in 2019, we're really just freshening up the data and it would take less time in-house to get it ready and to get it to the retirement system to get that actuarial done. But in my opinion, as chief, it's an absolute necessary thing for us to, even if we're going to look at other options, we have to know what things are going to cost.
I mean, I, and I agree with it completely because having that data point along with the $75,000 in the new budget that we just adopted for the retirement benefits package taken together, that would give us a hopefully a roadmap to do something, hopefully fairly quickly. The other just comment and then I'll yield the floor. You referenced a lot of other towns or cities and I believe in one of your slides, you actually suggested or recommended that we actually find out how they funded these, this their retirement system. And I think we need to do that somehow. We need to get their information or have work sessions with them or some way to find out, get the data points or the how they actually funded that so we can look at best practices and have opportunities to use for ourselves. Thank you.
I, because the Somerset County Sheriff's Department is becoming accredited, I've struck up a friendship with Sheriff Howard and they just moved their deputies to Leops. I know quite a few chiefs, it's easy for me to reach out to them and I'm sure it's easy for Mr. Manuel to reach out to other city and town managers. I was in Greenbelt when we moved from what was called McLeo into the Leop system. I know that to try to, we talk about fairness or whatnot. The town actually, or the city instituted a deferred compensation match for other employees who were not sworn to kind of offset the cost differences. But there are things out there. What I haven't heard is asking for concessions for officers to go into it. But our officers have said to offset that annual cost, they're willing to bypass a merit raise and to add a little bit more into the system, which I think speaks volumes about their desire to stay here, police here, and take care of our residents where they're willing to do it on their own dime. You don't see that dedication too often.
Thank you.
Yeah, and Chief, I told you, I did my homework more so than I probably should have. I have a map and pinned every single police department municipality. But just for the council's, I guess, edification, there's 157 municipalities, 77 have police departments, 19 of them are Leops, two withdrew from Leops. And that was as of April 28th this year. So I do, I have more paper. I'm sorry I killed a lot of trees on here, but I'm a kind of paper person. Captain Becker, do you have something to add to this conversation?
I believe I do. Thank you. And thank all of you on the council for your time and the questions this evening. I just want to kind of go back and I'm not going to go in any order because I bounced around in my note-taking based on the questions you were asking. But the most recent one that came up was why do the study? The study was done in 2019 so we could bring the information to the council as to what it was going to cost to make these changes and enhancements. Mayor, you said, do we need to do another study? I think for us to give you the correct answers to what it's going to cost, yes, ma'am. We need to have that actuarial study done yet again. It's only a few additions and a few deletions. So I don't think the study will take very long to get done, but then you will have the the actual number from the state saying this is what it would cost to get in as well as maintain. The, there were some discussions about the percentage of funding, what the municipalities pay versus what the state agencies pay. It is one large pot of money. They may diversify when the actuaries look at it, but it is coming from one large pot of money. And Councilman Jenkins, to what you just said, we've got the departments out there that have done this over the last several years, some as recently as two weeks ago, some have been in it for decades. I think it behooves the council to either bring those municipalities in or to give the direction to the chief and the police department to bring that data back to you. But to say, you know, it doesn't look to be as well-funded, well, there's other municipalities larger than us and smaller than us seem to be thinking that this is a good system to be in. And I think to hear from those municipalities and let them explain why it's a better system than whatever they had, I think that'll be good to hear as well. Councilwoman Bryant Ward, one of the things that you brought up was the employees that have left previously. I can only speak for the four years that I've been here with La Plata. And those few that have left during that time, I won't put in the same category as the people that I wrote my letter about of two months ago and that the FOP is, it did the survey on, you know, a few months prior to that. The people that I have my concerns with that are looking to leave are current employees. And I will tell you, and this is me, many of those employees are here right now and still here for the chief. The chief has hired, in the four years I've been here, has hired quality individuals. And one of those things that we have been selling these individuals on is our plan is going to change. We know it's the most important thing to get through a career and have a good pension. We are going to change that. We are working with the council. And for four years, we've been selling that statement. I will tell you that in those four years, as the mayor said, we've hired a large number of officers. And I can tell you, that's where the bulk of those that are looking to leave are those that have been there four years or less because they can take that four years in some of these departments and get credit for it when they leave. The other reason they can leave is they don't have five, 10, 15 years invested so they can go and start anew, if they need to start anew, at their 25-year pension system. The other thing you brought up, ma'am, was these officers going to Bowie or another Leops department. That is an option. I don't think that is the reality. If they're going to leave and they're going to leave because they want a better pension system, then they're going to go to a better pension system. They have been waiting here patiently, doing what the chief has asked them to do, work hard, make a good name for yourselves in this department and represent this community and keep them safe. And we've been doing that for these four years. Leops will help keep them here. If they don't think Leops is coming here, I don't think they're going to go to a Leops agency. More than likely, they're going to go to agencies that have even better pension systems. We are trying to get them one that will keep them here and allow them to work in the environment in which they were hired for, they enjoy being in, and they want to stay here and make a career within La Plata. Mr. Goldsmith, I think you mentioned the Leops and old Leops and how does this work? And Mayor, I know you touched on this. So I will speak for me. I will use me as an example. I come to this department with 29 and a half years of law enforcement and I retired from executive level and I moved over to executive level. I retired from my other agency. It is not a Leops agency and I was not in the state pension system when I retired. The day I hired, got hired with La Plata, I was told I had to go into the state pension system. I tried to opt out. I was told that was not an option. So I came in as though I was a 21-year-old. They didn't care what my age was. I went in as a day-one new employee in the state pension system. And somebody such as me or an older one, Mr. Goldsmith, you mentioned coming from PG or somewhere, at a minimum, that individual must work 10 years before he will get a benefit out of that system. What we have when we leave, if it's prior to 10 years, is I get what I put in through the system and per the state, we get a guaranteed 5% interest on what I put in over those however many years I stay. The state benefits from, if they make anything over 5% on my monies, the state keeps that money in that system. So there is a benefit for the state when people such as me never reach that retirement option. They keep the percentages above that 5%. The buy-in, speaking for an officer who works very hard in his career, and if I had done 20 years with my prior employer and my prior employer said, now the new guy has to work only 20 and you, you still have to work 30? I promise you, there would have been an exodus like no other. Because, and I think the chief alluded to it, benefits that have been changed, and I'll speak from the agency I came from with the Charles County Sheriff's Office. When I got hired, my benefits were lesser than an officer that got hired 12 months prior to me. Because 12 months prior to me getting hired, they changed the system. Those that were already in got a certain benefit and people hired after that day, which included me, had to work five extra years to reach the same percentage on retirement. While I was there, we changed the system and were able to get a drop option where if you work your minimum number of years being 25, you can then have an option to buy in for an extra five years and you're retired. So mathematically, I did 25 years with the Charles County Sheriff's Office and I retired. And I was given the ability to work an extra five years where they took care of my pension money for me and rolled that and helped make more money for me while I still was an employee of the sheriff's office. New employees now have that, but it's at a different benefit. They have a lesser benefit than what we bought into. So as the tiers go, they're still getting things, but it's on their shoulders that we kind of take some of our benefits. So if we were going to look at changing something, I would say, let's look at changing everybody who's currently employed gets a 25-year benefit at a certain percentage. And then if we had to go in another direction, the new hires would get a lower percentage for the same number of years. And I don't think that's what we're talking about as an option. But if we're going to do a tiered system, those who are here and working deserve the best tier as an option. Mr. Trolinger, the statement you made about the agency and what we do, I just appreciate it. It's nice to know that we are recognized and we've heard a lot of it lately with the business community and residents. They know this is important to us and we're getting a lot of positive feedback. So we appreciate that. I hope my answers to those things answered some of those questions that you did bring up. And if you have anything more, I will try and answer them as well. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I see, I know this is going to be a late night. We've got two, two more closed sessions after this. I don't want to negate to the police officer's opinion on this, but I think that what needs to be done here is an action, whether or not we are going to authorize money for the funding. And then when the study comes back, we will have a more, even more robust conversation because I do think that our council does need to ask even more questions. And I think that they've done a fabulous job tonight in asking the hard questions and not just taking everything at face value. So I commend you, council. But if I will entertain a motion for a budget request, if there is one out there.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we fund the actuarial study to allow us to take a look at the benefits and the potential buy-in as it relates to Leops or any other retirement benefits.
All right, I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, just go ahead, Jim.
The motion was strictly for the actuarial study. I thought we were going to be doing more in-depth study, 75,000. Actuarial is going to be what, 5,000 to 7,000?
That is already been.
I'm sorry?
That's already in the budget.
It's in the budget? Okay, good. That's what I think we're going to be doing.
Well, and to follow up with Councilman Goldsmith's question, I would just add that the 35K is in the budget, but I would urge us to complete that as soon as we can as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
And thank you for that. I appreciate that. Kevin, as we're doing the discussion, are we okay to take that from fund balance since we do have a balanced budget going in and we're one week away from, from approving it?
I think that it would be an FY22 expense. I don't know if it necessitates a budget amendment considering that the 75,000 or the class and comp study most likely will be able to cover both of those.
Okay, fantastic. So I have a motion and I Okay, fantastic. So I have a motion and I have a second. And the discussion that, the one last thing that I would add, which would echo both Jim and Dave, Dave's concern is that when we do this update, that we actually try to get our whole total package done. And I see everybody, enough, enough, you know, we've got to get it done now. So I have a motion, I have a second. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you guys very much for a very, very in-depth conversation. I look forward to having an even deeper one once we get this update done and to actually spend one evening just talking about benefits and nothing else on the agenda. So I'm sorry, we've got such a big night. And Chief, you're up again for the replacement vehicles.
Well, first let me thank you. This means a lot to the men and women of the agency. To have this study move forward means a lot to me personally as chief. I'm going to try to make this one as quick as possible for you, Mayor. On May 17th, one of our officers was involved in a collision. He was responding to assist other officers who were trying to apprehend an individual who bailed out of a stolen car. It was the same day that the deputies were shot in White Plains. So I think maybe some folks didn't know our officer was in an accident. The cruiser vehicle 800 was totaled. It had about 120,000 miles on it. We just got the information today from Legit. We'll get $12,025 for the vehicle. We're requesting to purchase an unbudgeted vehicle to replace that. And Kevin will know how the money is divvied up there. Clearly 12,000 is coming back into the general fund. The cost of the vehicle is $33,887. It's our recommendation as a police department to go ahead and make that purchase. Also, speaking to our vehicle vendor, the budget, the new upcoming budget includes two new patrol vehicles in it. If we send our vendor a letter of intent to purchase all three vehicles, and we only pay for the vehicles after they're delivered in the next budget year, and we get that letter to him by the 15th of June, we will pay the current contract bid for the Ford utilities. If we wait till after June 15th, we'll most likely have to wait for the new bid that will come out in October, and it will probably cost 4% to 5% more per unit. So by just sending, saying we intend to buy three vehicles, the one that was destroyed and the two in the next budget could save the town quite a bit money. We're buying the vehicles on the current Maryland state bid. And I hope I made that clear. Anybody has any questions, please feel free to ask.
All right, so looking at this, it's 32,328 with all of the goodies on there. It's 33,887. Does, that does not come, take into account the money that was given for totaling it out?
No, ma'am, that's correct. We just got those numbers today. So $12,000 would be coming back, $12,025 to the general fund would offset the purchase of the car.
So in reality, you're not asking the bottom line 33,000 and change. You're asking that less, the money that, I mean, if we're talking, you know, kind of balancing it out, correct?
I guess it's kind of left pocket, right pocket money. Something goes into the general fund and something comes out. 12,000 will go in and 33,800 will come out.
And Kevin, for purposes of authorizing this, should we authorize the 33, if it's the will of the council, 33,887? And, or should we do the 33,887 minus what has been allocated for the totaling of the vehicle?
So the proposal tonight from Chief Schenner is to purchase a replacement vehicle and then also go ahead and purchase the two vehicles for, that are in the FY 2022 budget. We're not going to issue a purchase order in June. We will issue a purchase order in July. So what we're asking you guys to do is to authorize this purchase. Did not have to go through our procurement because it is a state bid. In July, in July, we would be bringing forward a budget amendment for this third car, the replacement car, to get that funding into FY 2022, and we will issue the purchase order in July as well.
So when you bring it forward, are you bringing forward a 33,887? Or you, one that's 33,887 minus the 15 and change?
No, that, we're most likely going to receive that money in FY 21, so it'll go to FY 21. So we'll be bringing forward the full amount and just take that out of, out of fund balance. Because a large portion of that, the insurance reimbursement is going to go into fund balance as of June 30th of this year.
And, okay, thank you very much. And Chief, before I go any further, how is our officer?
He's fine. A little bit of his pride hurt, but he's a rookie and he bounced back from it. But thank you for asking.
Okay, good. Thank you. All right, council, I'll open it up to you for questions, comments? I'll talk down.
Now, it seems like with the, with the issuing the purchase order, we will save some funds anyway. So seemed like a prudent move.
All right, so if there's no discussion, do I have a motion to approve this purchase order?
Madam Mayor, this is Councilwoman Bryant Ward. I move that we move forward with the purchase order.
And the intent, and I guess the intent to buy?
Two.
Two, yeah.
Mayor James, if I could just interject briefly, we will need to bring this forward because it goes over our procurement threshold at the business meeting this month for
Okay, so we don't need to, so we just need a consensus then?
Yeah, I guess. I would double check with Danielle.
Danielle, are you making me up to dry?
But anyway, yes, we would have to, we would do the typical resolution to authorize the contract.
Okay, so you just need a consensus.
Period of business meeting.
Okay. Do I have a consensus from the council to push this to? What are you doing to me, Danielle? Come on now. Do I have a consensus from the council?
Yes, you do.
Yes, yes, yes. All right. There's a consensus to move this forward, that we will be getting to see it again. And a couple, and next week or the week after. I don't even remember anymore. All right, thank you very much. I appreciate that. All right, moving along, let's go to the town council rules of procedure development. Anybody like to take that?
Sure. I, thank you, Mayor. Thank you to Brent and to Danielle for getting this on the agenda and for fellow council members for recognizing a need for some established rules of procedure as it relates to adding agenda topics and just decorum overall. I think, Ms. Manley, you did a fantastic job kind of combining resources and giving us a roadmap as to what we should be considering and holding each other accountable to making our meetings potentially more efficient. I think in our discussion tonight, if we look at the rules of procedure, it would have been helpful, maybe, for all of us. So I would like, if you could, Danielle, give us an idea of where you'd like some feedback from us and then maybe have some discussion. If anybody else had any comments on it, I thought this was fantastic as far as a working document to move forward with and tinker with. So I appreciate it so much.
You're very much welcome. Fortunately, I didn't have to recreate the wheel. Our fellow municipalities have done a lot of the work for us, probably for the same reasons over the years, you know, individuals come forward and would like some more structure. With this particular document, it's pretty close to being acceptable. It needs to be tweaked. Really, the input from the council is what you're comfortable with. What the, you know, with the deadlines, sometimes deadlines are hard to meet, especially when we have three meetings a month. Generally, items are discussed at a work session before being prepared for a business meeting. So there are instances where an item could wait for an entire month before they are considered, if you've missed that deadline. So, but this does kind of hold all of us, myself included, accountable. You know, for the publishing to give everyone the chance to review. Most of these changes are based on, the tracked changes are based on just how we do things. The first question for the council has to do with the annual calendar. The boards and commissions, specifically the planning commission and the design review board, generally adopt their own calendars, and those are available out there for the public. So I'm not sure if you would prefer a consolidated calendar or just to keep it the way it is, and the calendar is adopted for town council meetings only annually or as needed. So what is the consensus of the council for that calendar?
Madam Mayor, Danielle, this is Evelyn. I would like to keep it separate. I think it's worked well that way. You can see the commission, the other boards' meetings on the civic website. So that's good. Keeping our meetings separate would be great for me.
I would agree with that. Thanks.
Danielle, you've been doing this a long time. Is that what works easiest for staff?
It does. And it used to be that there was one schedule adopted. It was a very large document. It wasn't the sheet of paper that we have now that you could post on your fridge if you choose to. And then the other groups, you know, when they needed to make changes, it was cumbersome. It didn't allow for that flexibility. I think the public is used to those different schedules. So I think that, and with having the online meeting management, the civic web where that calendar is available, I think that helps as well. So I mean, it, I would work with it either way, whatever the council's preference is. But I do think I agree with Councilwoman Bryant Ward that, you know, it's working, so why change it?
I agree as well. So unless I hear any of the other council members objecting, let's keep that as it is.
Okay, the next question, or it's really a comment, is just to be in compliance with what's written here. Is that the schedule, annual schedule is adopted by resolution. Generally, the schedule has just been adopted as the schedule. So for your business meeting, if this document is finalized, then what we would do is have for you a resolution just to bring that into compliance.
And that sounds good to me.
The other item, some of these comments include like excerpts from the code. It was to help me to see where things compared. So they may not be a true comment. So basically, like this 13-1, this does comply. It basically just says about holding regular meetings. The next is the town hall meetings. This is a big one. Currently, we don't have any provisions or any history withholding, well, I guess they weren't called town hall meetings. All of our meetings are town hall meetings until we went virtual anyway. However, under that general concept, is this something that the council is interested in developing further or pursuing, or would you just soon leave it out of this document? And when that is further developed, then this document could be revised.
I'm in favor of the latter.
Okay, so we'll remove it now and then, you know, if you choose to develop it, we can do that and then insert it. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah.
That's fine. One of the things that I like about your document, Danielle, is that this is, you know, we're looking at this on a yearly basis and we can modify, you know, as we go. So that's, that's fine.
Yeah, I liked that idea. It keeps things fresh. We all know how quickly like codes and policies can become out of date when we're not reviewing them. I'm just as guilty as the next person of doing that. You know, you're done, you move on. And so I do appreciate that, just so we can think of, you know, how we're doing business. How this is written with the special meetings somewhat complies with code. Honestly, I think the code and the charter should be looked at just to freshen it up, modernize it, make it a little easier to understand. Things like the town clerk delivering to your place of residence. I don't want to do that. Okay, you could assume that you're checking your email at your place of residence. So I guess we're in compliance. But I think that we, you know, in addition to this document, we're going to have to look at the code and charter just to make some of those changes as well. So this was just more to highlight it. The next item would be that pre-organizational meeting and the organizational meeting. I think there was some discussion about possibly having a pre-organizational meeting for this past election that we just went through. I can see the value in that.
Me too.
I see that. I knew that light bulbs were going off in the mayor's.
Oh, yeah.
So I would like your input here. If you, you know, what would have helped all of you going into this? And we can, you know, add it here.
If I can add something to it, it is a difficult, it's a difficult situation, I think, to be put in. When I came on four years ago, they did have a pre-organizational meeting, sort of, that kind of went over the budget and all of that. And it was with all eight candidates, or 10 candidates, all 10 candidates. So that was interesting, but it was very uncomfortable because of the way that election was four years ago. I, I liked the way that it was, the information that was covered. With that said, I think that anybody running for council should have already done their due diligence and had been kept keeping up with all of this. But there's nuances that, that occur throughout, you know, a council. And how things, as we're seeing right now, how things are presented. I think that it should be done, gone over the budget very quickly, gone over some of the big ticket items that may have been missed. They may have missed in the meetings or have questions asked. But I think a pre-organizational meeting and to get to know our amazing team here. I would be, I would really encourage that for anyone coming in. So, and get to know what the commissions, the committees, the boards do. Because if the person is successful in winning the election, they're going to sit on a committee or a board. So I think that is so, so important. I'm just not sure when the timing should be. Should it be on after the election, between that Tuesday and that Monday? That's a lot to absorb. Or do we do like we did in the past, all 10?
Mayor, if I can interject?
Please do.
Town manager, Brent manager, I think one of the unique things that we face here is that our elections are on a Tuesday and the organizational meeting takes place on Monday, the following Monday. And most organizations I've worked in the past, the election's in May and the new body takes seat July 1. And most organizations I've worked in the past, the election's in May and the new body takes seat July 1. So you have a sort of period there that this may be more appropriate for, but it's very pressed under our sort of calendar, if you will, to sort of meet within, you know, you have, what, three business days?
And you know what? You bring up a great point. And that may be something that we want to look in the charter. Because as you are witnessing right now, and it happens every four years, you've got a new council that is approving a budget that has been worked on by the previous council since November. And they've got to come up to speed on this. And if we do actually update our charter to reflect July 1st, when that's when the budget, you know, kicks in and all of that, that's our calendar. That's a great idea. And then you have six weeks, eight weeks to bring the new council up to speed.
There, if I may, this, there is also the option, since this doesn't mention timing of that pre-organizational meeting. We were, there was a little bit of discussion of having something similar or, you know, actually did have something similar to a certain extent prior to the swearing in. That is an option to have that, let's say, at 5:00. And then the swearing in and the organizational meeting is at 7:00 potentially.
That was such a quick one. I would have loved to really dive into that and get more information, but it was just kind of an overview. Also, you know, Danielle, you have that one program that, or I guess it's a program, that they have for elected officials. And it talks about what council can and cannot do, what a mayor can and cannot do. That may be worth the price to pay every four years to get them up to speed. But I think a pre-organizational meeting is a must. It's just timing. And that's where I would go with that one. Does council have any other comments on that?
I think we've got three years or so to figure out when we want to have the meeting, but I think we all agree we should have it, right? So I think it's fine as it is. We, I think Brent raises some really good points. And I know all of us would like to have greater engagement in the election than we've had in the past. So I think as a council, we'll be looking at that. So we might table the when, but the if, I think we can agree to today.
Exactly. Having cleared out reasonable.
Yes. Good point.
All right.
I think as far as the attachment, this language will go away with the code of conduct. I think a simple statement for, you know, a generalized statement that the town council complies with the adopted personnel policy manual or something along that line, those lines, instead of a separate document. Does that sound reasonable?
It does. But would this be an opportunity, and I don't know if it's a good one or not, to implement the Roberts rules that we follow? Because we don't follow the Robert rules of order. Is that something that we should adopt or not? Because this would be the time to do that, I would think.
Of course, the council can, you know, weigh in on that. There are pros and cons with adopting Roberts rules of order. I mean, I'm one that likes to follow the rules. I like to be able to pick up a book and read the rules so I know what to follow. It takes some of the guesswork out. But then it also does formalize things completely. Which, again, I don't take issue with. However, you know, some of the, I want to say relaxed. The relaxed environment may be hampered slightly. If the town council adopts Roberts rules of order, then I would think that would be what all of our boards and commissions would have to do as well.
Okay. That's a good thing to think about. Brent, were you saying something?
Yeah, I know that, once again, my past experience drawing upon that, you know, was Roberts rules of order. And Danielle, you may be more familiar because it's been a long time since I've done bylaws and things for boards. But I think there's a modified version of Roberts rules of order that allows for.
There's the in-brief version. Yeah, it's been revised multiple times, but there is Roberts rules of order in brief. And that's the one that is recommended to adopt if it's going to be adopted. And that definitely is an option.
So this is Evelyn, but the Robert rules of order is the 12th edition now. The abbreviated version is not really a relaxed version. It is just a list of rules and regulations that are still adherent to the current document. And so it does take away, I mean, even the way you make motions and the way you repeal motions. So it's going to be a whole lot stricter than just having the document in place. And you would need someone trained in parliamentary procedures to be able to enforce the Robert rules of order.
Yeah.
So it's definitely seriously about that.
And generally municipalities that adopt Roberts rules of order have an attorney that has parliamentary experience. I'm not a parliamentarian. I'm not necessarily opposed to being one. However, you know, we would, it would make things very strict. I don't know if it's necessarily required to make a decision right now on that, but it's something to talk about because you can definitely revisit your rules of procedure when you choose to.
Fantastic. I think that is a conversation for another day, but that is just something to kind of put in the back of your head.
If anybody, I have the, I don't, I think I have the 11th edition in my office of the in-brief, the brief, and also the full version. If anybody would like to have a light read and sit down and look through it and see if you're interested.
I have the 12th edition for you. We use it in my current meeting.
Evelyn, you're the expert. Look at you. Thanks for volunteering.
I love that. Again, here's the, this was highlighted. Michelle had a question about inserting specific references. That's a very valid point. I do have concern about inserting very specific references only because if you change the code, then you have to go back and change every other document that references that. We do know that they exist. We know there's, you know, provisions in the charter and the code and state law, for example, and federal law, for that matter, that is applicable to the conduct of the town's business. So I would rather not have the specific references here. But if you feel more comfortable with them in this document, then we can go through and insert those.
I totally agree with you, especially since we are going to look at updating our charter. I will, I hope. It's past 1888. We need to update it a little bit. But as long as we follow, I mean, it references the charter and town code. So I think that we need to be aware of the very specifics on there. But to put it in this document, if we do have any intentions of updating our charter, I don't see doing double duty.
Yeah, we have, um, I'm sorry, apologize.
No, no, that's okay.
Okay, we do have, like, for example, throughout our code, we have references throughout to outdated state law. You know, it becomes an issue while the intent is obvious. It, you know, if someone were to challenge it, they could possibly win. The next big one, and, you know, Brent and I did not talk about this or I didn't talk about this with the mayor. I'll leave this all up to you. This pretty much stayed the same from what the example language was. And so it does talk about how the mayor and the town manager, this develops the agenda each week and how that works. So I don't necessarily have any input there. I'm sure others do and will.
Anything?
Okay, this one is pretty generic for the town manager. Pretty much mirrors the town code, this section related to the chief executive officer. Same with the town clerk. The statement to be included in minutes, that's an unwritten rule. If you have any input on it, then please say so. I'm fine with it. Having any written statement to provide it in advance would be very helpful to me. But that generally doesn't happen in my experience, not often, anyway.
So Danielle, when would you use that statements to be included in the minutes? We haven't seen that in the past four years, have we?
No, generally what it's for is minutes are action. You're recording the action. Past practice, if matter of fact, Roberts rules of order would move you away from it, is that you gave a summary of the discussion. That's no longer the practice. You just record what happened. If a council member wants to make sure that their statement on an item is included on the record in the minutes, then they would have to request so.
Okay, okay. Interesting. I mean, I don't see removing it if that's the way that it is.
Okay. Brent, you probably would have more to say about the department heads. But the way I read this, it's pretty much how we do business now.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, I'd say, and that's what we're trying, attempting to do, is sort of accurately reflect what we are currently doing or what we hope to be doing in the future. So, yeah, I would say this is fine.
Yeah, and then the preservation of order, again, not much changed from the example. We do have language related to decorum in the code. I don't see where it's contradictory to what's written in these rules of procedure. The enforcement of decorum is in the code. I'm not sure that we've ever designated a sergeant-at-arms for the council meetings.
I think that would.
Meetings used to be a little rough at some point.
And usually when we were in person, we usually always had one of the police officers there. But this is saying that we need somebody there, sergeant-at-arms.
Code, and we'll look at that when, you know, we go to change the code just to see what needs to be revised there. But it doesn't say that in the rules of procedure.
It's not a bad idea.
If you're okay with this section, I didn't see anything that jumped out. But really, it's, especially with you, Mayor James, that as the presiding officer, you would need to enforce this.
Preservation of order, yeah. Usually we do a good job, right, most of the time? I don't, I don't have any questions on that.
And really, once, you know, once we run through this, all of these comments and things, any track changes, all of that'll come out and you can read it in its entirety so that you can get a feel for how it flows, how it works. The council members addressing council. It's pretty typical when even with a board chair and, you know, this is how it's done. But if you see anything that jumps out at you or would like any changes, please let me know.
I don't see anything. How about the rest of the council?
None here.
None here.
No, no.
All right, so here's where a lot of the track changes were inserted. So basically, the town manager and the mayor pretty much decide the agenda. The town clerk obviously will publish the agenda. This really between all of you on, you know, to see if anything needs to be done differently in this section. I tried to make some changes where they made sense. I did insert seven days instead of the five from the example. And I did also include work sessions. So if, you know, you want any changes in here, I'd appreciate that input.
Danielle, I'm sorry, reading this, it's a proposed agenda. So we're working on that. That should be Brent and myself. And your only role technically should be to publish it. Am I reading that correctly?
It's not necessarily that I'm not creating the agenda in the meeting management. I would still be doing all of that. It's just a matter of developing what the agenda items are.
Okay.
And then of course, you know, and it's really no different than how it happens now as far as making sure that any reports or backup materials that need to be attached to the agenda are provided to me so I can upload them.
You know, I like that actual, and I'm going to say it's a shift because I don't think we've executed that. I think you, it falls on your shoulders every single week that they have that. I don't mind that at all and making sure, to kind of filter it through Brent and myself to get it to you. Because it take, I just know how busy you are and how you're in six different directions. I don't mind taking, you know, doing exactly what that says. Matt, I see you have your hand up.
I'll wait till Brent. I think Brent, you had some comment.
Yeah, I would just, thank you, Matt, or excuse me, Councilman Trelenger. I would just state that, you know, one of the things we have to remember is beside Danielle's, or should I say Madam Clerk's title as Madam Clerk, she is also the Director of Legislative Services, which I think entails her being more involved with the process. So if we were going to fairly reflect our current practices, it may be good to include her in the mix. Because beside being the Madam Clerk, she is also the Director of Legislative Services. So I just want to be, for us to be mindful of that.
And, and I like the teamwork. I definitely like the teamwork effort on that and spread it around a little bit. Uh, Matt, who do you have?
Uh, my only comment was, I see we have, um, seven business days before the meeting. We probably, seven actual days is probably fine. Um, right, I mean, seven business days to get into, you know, what's the weekend and what's a holiday or whatever. I think, I, I don't know if you guys have think seven business days is more appropriate, but I think seven's probably fine.
Well, how about, you know what, and I didn't even think of that, is if we stayed with just five business days, then that is.
Accomplishes the same goal.
Same thing.
Um, plus it incorporates the, um, holiday.
Yeah.
You know, so it gives an extra day versus a couple extra day. That's a good point, Matt. I would say go back to five business days.
Um, with this to insert the Director of Legislative Service, actually, it should probably be the town clerk. Um, so we can revise that to put the town clerk in here. And what I'll do is put a disclaimer, where applicable.
Okay.
Uh, does, you know, so, I mean, can't, I, I don't want to think of me in the position, just the position in general. Um, and that way, there's some leeway between the town manager and the mayor on how that gets done. So I'm not trying to sh, my responsibilities.
I know, I'm trying to help you out here.
Okay, what about with the items added to the agenda? Um, this is really kind of unfamiliar territory with me when it says, you know, by an individual council member. I, I'm really not sure what all of you think about this particular section and how that should be done.
Okay, I, I see, Dave, I see your hand raised too, but I, I, go ahead, Dave, and then I.
Well, that was my question because that paragraph, second paragraph under section four dash two is, it's entitled, uh, you know, if we wanted to add an agenda item, but then it begins to, oh, department head or, okay, I see what you're saying. Uh, never mind. So we could, we could add, we, we could add an agenda item by going through, uh, the town manager, the mayor, and you, five days prior to a work session. Is that what it's trying to say?
Um, I do believe that, um, how I added the language in here is generally, at least past practice, and I'm not suggesting that we have to continue with past practices, but generally, as an example, town council member receives a request from a constituent, someone in the community, brings something forward. That town council member comes to a work session and says, "Town council, there's this item, do you want to consider developing this further?" Or how, whatever is appropriate. Town council would reach consensus on how to proceed with it, and then it would be tasked, staff, wherever applicable, would be tasked with developing that further and bringing it forward.
I do think there needs to be some type of control on that because, and just, we experienced this, uh, just recently where it just seemed, um, to be a little point of contention that items added to the agenda. I mean, it just got to be a little crazy there. So, um, I do think we need very clear set rules on what can and cannot be done on that.
Mayor, do you have any, um, in? Yeah, so Mayor, do you have any insight as to what, what you're recommending to that? And I, I'm assuming, look, we don't want people adding the same thing to the agenda every time if we've talked about it, or rogue weird things coming up and us not have a say, right?
Absolutely, and it's got to be, um, I know everything that is presented, or everybody's passionate about something. And it's got to be, to me, it has to have some type of, um, checks and balance on that. So if I want to add on, you know, whatever ridiculousness I want to add on, it shouldn't just be, since we're a council manager, it shouldn't just be me saying, "Add it on," and especially last minute. And I know how Danielle is very accommodating. Um, it just creates heartache. So I think that we do have to adhere to this five business days to add it, unless it's a nine-one-one. I mean, that's the only, there's an exception to the rule. Um, but I, I think that we need to follow the same rules and regulations on that, and it says, uh, it's, it's the, isn't it the, the mayor, the, um, town clerk, or the majority of the, um, council can add? Am I right on?
The majority of the council was only related to special meetings.
Okay.
So maybe, I mean, you bring up a good point. Maybe there is something that needs to be added in there for those, that majority of the council. Um.
And, and I don't think it will be a hard thing to do if it's a good item. You know, you get two other people to say, "Yeah, we want to talk about that, and here's my five business days beforehand." But I think that it kind of gets you out of that, uh, pressure from, you know, some, we, external pressure making you put something on the agenda.
I'd be reluctant to silencing a council member from placing something on the agenda, uh, especially with the time constraints that we have all in signing off on a particular item. Um, I understand the concern. I think this is something we need to explore. I, I hear you. Um, but I think if you're elected, you've got residents that want some answers, you know, either proper channels, et cetera. But I think you've got to give some kind of credibility to the fact that you've been elected to office to place items on an agenda of which, you know, you're being held accountable.
And, and I do think that this warrants, uh, further investigation and discussion because you can always be able to add, and I don't even want to say an add, under matters of discussion, that's always open where you can say, "I had Sally down the street concerned about this." It may not be an actual agenda item, but, um, it, there's always a way. I mean, every single meeting, we can address our, the concerns of our residents. It's what is actually considered a big agenda item. And I do think, um, because of, of the hour and, um, as much as we've gone through, let's, let's move on from this one and let's think about this one, um, a little bit more. I think this can have more discussion, but Matt, I like your, definitely like your, uh, your point on that one as well.
Certainly, what I'll do is when we clean up the rest of the document, this area will stay as is. Because, you know, we need to look at it further. And I agree with that completely. I knew these two, this particular section would, it's really kind of the meat of the document.
Yes.
So, okay, that, um. And then same with the distribution of the agenda. The Civic Web is our distribution method. Um, really in here, and it's basically, this said that the town manager may, the sample said that the town manager may delay the publication of the packet to noon on Wednesday prior. I didn't want to say what that is. Because, um, I said, or I just gave latitude to reschedule an agenda item. Um, if someone comes forward, they're not prepared, they don't have all of their information. There's latitude to be able to push them to another agenda.
I like that.
I mean, I, I know that we all struggle with, sometimes it's inevitable, we have no choice to, you know, look at those emergency items, the last minute items, things where you can't possibly have everything the week prior. Um, but it's also not making someone's lack of planning our emergency either.
We're, we're waiting on outside review agencies to return data or information to us, so that could also be a qualifying factor.
Absolutely.
Yes, so, um, and then basically it's just saying that the agenda will be posted to the Civic website. If there are, um, members of the community that do not have internet access, um, we will, we make accommodations to provide a printed packet. Um, that generally doesn't, there's requests generally do not come in, um, but we do have that ability to provide that to the public. One major question here, and, and if you, because of the late hour, if you want to push this, the further review of this to next week, I'm fine with it. I will take absolutely no offense.
Good. Because I would, I mean, I love, um, all of this. This is, this is exactly what we needed, but, um, I, I'm going to, I think I'm going to pull Patty Mudd on you. And I love my Patty. I think that, whoo, that's, that's been one heck of a two and a half hour meeting and plus the one beforehand. Um, if it's okay with council, and, and it gives you another week to really look at it and make comments, uh, on it, are you guys okay with that? Because we still have two closed sessions to go and we're almost done with the agenda.
I'm okay with that, yeah, I'm okay with that.
All right.
And, and I would just. And I would just, uh, I would underscore what Matt said earlier about, thank you for the effort of doing this.
Wow, yeah, above and beyond. All right, so we will finish that when I get a bigger cup of coffee and next week. And, uh, and, uh, thank you, um, Matt, for suggesting that it's needed to be looked at. All right. Uh, town council strategic planning. Um, Evelyn, I'm going to have you, uh, go on that unless you want to, you can do whatever you want.
Sure, it, it won't take, um, long, Madam Mayor. Um, one of the things that I identified is that each of us came in with our goals and objectives, but many of the things that we were, you know, working on and suggested and made recommendations for, you know, there's some overlap with the, the town staff. They were working on some of these things. And so what I wanted to do is to make sure that we were, you know, on the same page and that we kind of aligned those goals and objectives so that they can turn into action items. You know, having conversations and me having conversations with Kevin and Bren and Bobby and all of them, and then you having conversations and coming out with a different action items, where much, much of what we've talked about has already been in the works, you know? And so wanted to just align those goals and objectives, um, identify a list of goals and objectives that are already in the works and how do we bring them to closure? And identify a path forward. So I didn't want us all spinning our wheels, working on the same things from a different perspective when we're trying to, uh, achieve a common goal. And that's what, that's what this was basically in reference to. Many of the things that I thought about and talked to, um, Michelle and Brent, you know, they were already working on those things. So how do we align those, our actions to make sure we come up with a good product? And so basically, that's what I was talking about.
And you know, and, and, uh, I think there's two ways to do that. The first one is, we did, a couple of years ago, we had a strategic planning, um, meeting, and, um, we've had a couple of them. I think it's got to be laser focused. This is not so broad. These are the things that, as Evelyn, you've said, here are each of our, um, objectives. Now, how do we put it in a comprehensive plan so that our staff is not doing double duty? I love that. And the one thing that I have done, which, um, I'm hoping is implemented this Friday, is I put together, and you guys can always add to it and change what it is, but I put down all of the kind of big projects we're working on now to get an update, a Friday update. It could be no action has been taken, or we've been working on this or whatnot, so that you all, all five of us are kept up with what's going on, um, with these projects. So when we are asked or we have questions or whatnot, we have it on one piece of paper where we can see, this is what's going on. It's a rough draft, I think it needs to be, um, polished a little bit, uh, but, uh, your idea is the same as what I have thought of as well. Let's get it on a piece of paper and see where we are on these things and how we can stop duplicating efforts.
Yeah.
Mayor James, I, just a comment and a question. Uh, Councilman, uh, Parker Bryant, thank you for doing this because that's right on the money. And Mayor James, um, is this similar to what's already on, I guess, Microsoft Teams in terms of, I forget where it is, um, it's called Work in Progress, and there's a page where there's a listing of all the projects, who's assigned to it and the status. And so, uh, am I assuming that that's kind of like the template that you're trying to use?
Absolutely, and you can, um, you can add, you can add more columns to it. So there may be, Evelyn will say, "But I need to know specifically this." Perfect, add the column in. Uh, at least we've got a template that we can start working on, and I think that that will help, um, our great, uh, staff with the direction of the council, but it will also help us know where we stand on each of those. So, yep.
Yeah, so, so I would certainly, again, concur with all that and thank you. And then just FYI, I've already added some material to the, the Plated Town Center.
I love it, love it, thank you.
I'm going to try to use it again, thank you.
Good. And, uh, I'll make sure that, uh, council and, uh, staff knows where it is located, so your contributions would be greatly appreciated. Evelyn, do you have anything else to add on? Again, a great, uh, item, uh, item on our agenda.
No, I just think it would help us to prioritize our efforts, um, especially as we move forward. We're trying to work on the, you know, the, um, comprehensive retirement plan. I think that we need to be on the same page as we work towards that and, and support staff in their efforts of trying to get this accomplished. Um, so I just think that it would just make it easier.
Thank you very much. All right, that brings us down to one of our last ones for this, uh, session. Um, we have a reason to go into closed session, uh, two closed sessions, back-to-back closed sessions. So, um, I will, since I have, well, you all have it there too, but I make a motion to go into closed session under State Government Article, Chapter three dash three oh five B seven, to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter. Oops, that one was already done. How about this one? Uh, to discuss public security if the council or town of a plated determines that public discussion would risk a, would constitute a risk to the public or to public security. Um, we have determined that, and the subject is to a plated police department review and presentation regarding measures to address increased gun violence. Do I have a second?
I would second that motion.
All right, any discussion? Okay, we will go roll call. Councilman, uh, Goldsmith?
I approve, yes.
Uh, Councilman Trelenger?
I also approve, thank you.
Uh, Councilwoman, Brian Ward?
Yes, I approve.
Councilman Jenkins?
Yes, I approve.
And Mayor James approves. Um, second one is a motion for a closed session for, uh, statutory authority to close session is under State Government Article, Chapter three dash three oh five B, uh, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction. It's a discussion of termination and new appointment to a town council-appointed position. Do I have a second? council-appointed position. Do I have a second?
Goldsmith, second.
All right. And I'm going to go through whether yay or nay into going to the second closed session. Councilman Goldsmith?
Yay.
Councilman Challenger?
Yeah.
You sound so thrilled. Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jenkins?
Yes.
And Mayor James. All right. So we will immediately follow it, following the close of this meeting, go into the first closed session followed by the second closed session. Matters of Information. All right.
Madam Mayor, the only thing I was going to bring to the council, you tried to get away with it.
I really did.
Attention is other than the fact that, just to let you guys, the reason I keep getting up is because with our green building, as lovely as it is, at five o'clock, the air turns off. So I went out in the hall and it's 83 degrees in the building right now. So I had to bypass the system. And Mayor, hopefully you, you are experiencing a little cooler air. But the only thing I wanted to bring to council's attention is that we did apply for the Radio Station Road side path grant Thursday. So we will, it'll be summer before we get a notification one way or another.
Terrific.
That's great news. And then next week for our future meeting topics, we'll have Steve Proctor and Associates here for the Melwood Horticultural Training Center. All right. Anything else for future meeting topics? Brings us to a public forum, three hours in. Do I have anyone who would like to speak? If so, if you could please state your name, your address, whether you're in the incorporated town limits, and please try to keep it to three minutes or less. Do I have anybody who would like to speak? All right. Hearing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor?
Yes.
I would like to say something.
You know, you were disappointing me a little bit when you didn't pop up there, Mike. So go ahead.
Well, I had to star six. My unmute button wouldn't work. So took me a few, a few seconds. At the last meeting, after the public forum, which was at the beginning of the meeting, there was some discussion about Comcast. Has that franchise agreement been renewed?
That is a great question. It has been discussed and they're tweaking the last, last bit so that we mirror the counties. And that should be executed very, very shortly. So I know that has been something that you have been very much on us for, and I appreciate that. We see, we see very, the end in sight.
Okay. But I want to know, the questions that I've raised and have given to the town, an extensive folder, by the way, were all of those things discussed and remedied? And if not, I'd like to know before it's finalized, what wasn't remedied?
Hey, Madam Mayor?
Yep. Danielle, Brent, take that.
I do believe, Mr. Ronfola, that the items that you raised were related to customer service and some of the boxes. There's no specific provisions for equipment or anything along those lines. That's not something that's in that franchise agreement. However, we are working to strengthen the customer service requirements in the town. So that would be coming.
It was much more than customer service. I, I'll go through them for you. There was some fees related to digital adapters that we were given written confirmation that those would be offered free of charge. And then after four years, they just started charging us for them. Started at a $1.99 per month each for these digital adapters. They're up to $7.50 now each per month. I also talked, discussed something about the length of the franchise agreement. The town council previous to 2017 was in agreement with me unanimously that any such agreement should not exceed three to five years. They've already gone without an agreement for over three years. That should never happen again. And the way to go about that is they should be offered two things. You either negotiate the agreement before the expiration date and get it settled, or you turn your signal off on the date of the expiration, or you can pay the town a hefty fee for each day that you go without a finalized agreement. That should never occur again. They have, they're calling the shots and the town has no, no say in this, it seems like. And I would, I had also requested that there should be a date beyond which Comcast will be allowed to continue operating in our town without a franchise agreement. That should be determined and written into the agreement. So if those things haven't been addressed, this agreement is not ready to be negotiated. And this has been going on now for years. So I don't, I don't know how you could say we're at the end of this, but there's been no discussion. In fact, at one time, the town council said, "I could be part of this so I can get these things addressed." And I just heard this after the public forum last week.
Mr. Ronfola, I think you misinterpreted what Mayor James' statement was. The, we're near the end of it, meaning that we will begin to go through the public hearing process. We will sit down at the table with the Comcast representatives in the public meeting to just negotiate this agreement and will go through the public hearing process. So you will have your opportunity to voice your concerns.
All right. On another issue, after the public forum last week, there was mention of the possibility of having to purchase water from WSSC at a higher rate than what we're paying now to get water. Now, all of this was known to the town and it was addressed at a great extent back at the turn of the century, around 2004, 2005. The town has known this. They've known that our aquifer is running down. At the time, it was discussed that the level of the, the lower Patasko River of aquifer, I mean, exceeded 170 feet below sea level. And that was a significant drop then. And it was also determined that in La Plata, it had dropped 50 feet back then. And what has the town done? They've done nothing but annex property and approved extensive high-density development since then, when there should have been a moratorium on all this until this water situation would be straightened out. I don't know if you know it or not, but the state says it requires local authorities to ensure adequate water, that adequate water is available before approving a building permit and to ensure adequate capacity will be available in time to serve a proposed development before approving a subdivision plan. None of this seems to have been done. We are actually violating the law in not causing these subdivisions to have to come back to the table and renegotiate how dense they are. So I don't understand why are we now considering buying water? We knew this problem existed back then. And yet we're doing everything possible to drain our aquifer. Makes no sense to me. And now the people in this town are going to have to pay much higher fees for water.
We are in active negotiations and conversations with Secretary Rumbles on how that we can move forward from this. There's a whole backstory to what has been going on, but we look like we're moving in a positive position on this, a direction, I should say, on this. But I appreciate your addressing this and your concern. Is that it for this evening?
That's all I have.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Is there anyone else that would like to speak this evening? With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you. Woo, anticipation. Do I have a second?
A second.
Y'all, it's like pulling teeth. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. And you know you have a closed session, two of them afterwards. Aye. Any, any opposed? Okay.
Quick question. Do we just go online here for the closed session? Or we got to log out and log back in?
Log off and log back in. See you guys in a sec. Good night, everyone.